All right, why don't we get started this morning with our invocation from Pastor Derek Scobie. Derek is the chaplain at Physicians Choice Hospice and of course is the pastor at Ebenezer Baptist Church and is recently married, so congratulations Pastor Scobie and welcome.
Eternal and loving God, our Father, to the Father of our Lord and Savior Jesus, who is the Christ, to the only true and living God, to the only wise God. To thee, Father, we come on this morning to say thank you. We thank you, dear Master, for this another day and we thank you for another opportunity to make the right decisions in our city and in our lives. Father, I humbly come and ask, I lift up to you the civil servants of the city of Oklahoma City. I lift up to you our police officers, our deputies, sheriffs, our firefighters. We ask, God, that you would just put your loving arms of protection around about them, Father, for all of our civil workers. Lord, we ask now that you would just give wisdom and guidance to the city council, to the city manager, to our mayor and to all that are under the sound of my voice. We just say we thank you for this time and we love you. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And Councilman McAtee will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Flanks, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order and we are now on item three, office of the mayor. We kind of protected Jim Couch's retirement festivities at the last meeting, which means we have a little heavier load today on the office of the mayor. So I'll make my way to the front and we will welcome some special guests. All right, we have some employees of the year and of course it's a little bit into 2019, but the year we are referring to is 2018. And let's begin with Christina Tran. Christina, why don't you come forward? Now, we remember hearing a little bit about you just a few months ago, but we do not want to give you short shrift, so we're going to hear about you again as you have now emerged as not just an employee of the month, which you were in October, is that correct? But now, an employee of the year. So if the clerk would please read the resolution for Christina Tran.
Whereas Christina Tran has been a city employee for two years and is the community relations coordinator for the city's Office of Emergency Management. Whereas Christina performs public education and outreach to increase community preparedness and resiliency. Whereas Christina plans, schedules, coordinates and conducts a wide range of public outreach events for residents and she manages the Office of Emergency Management's social media platforms. Whereas Christina has organized 44 community outreach events reaching over 9,500 residents. Whereas Christina has a working knowledge of the fundamentals of emergency management and has a thorough understanding of social media applications, making her an invaluable asset to her team. Christina demonstrates great initiative and creativity, completes her work on time and efficiently performs her duties and responsibilities. Whereas Christina received FEMA's Region Six Community Preparedness Award this year in recognition of her outstanding work in whole community education and outreach. Whereas this council desires to recognize Christina Tran for her dedication, professionalism and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Christina, 2018 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Year.
Now, let's hear it for Christina. We have the finest city employees in the nation and you today represent for the last year 4,700 city employees. You are the best of the best. Well, until we take this vote, let's see actually, as soon as we take this vote, let's see if this works out. Do we have a motion? Got a motion in a second. Why don't you cast your votes? Passes unanimously, you are the employee of the year. Don't run away.
Thank you so much. I'm extremely humbled and honored to have received this award. Couldn't agree more. I work alongside amazing people that are equally deserving of this, all serving this beautiful city of ours and want to thank Quanis Club for sponsoring this award. My supervisor and mentor, Captain Frank Barnes, for always supporting me in my work and police administration and my husband and my family. Thank you.
Why don't we have our firefighter of the year come forward? Stand by me and let's learn a little bit about you. Clerk, if you would please just, please read this resolution for our firefighter of the year.
Whereas Major Louis Marshick has been a city employee for 25 years and is the fire department's public education instructor. Whereas Major Marshick oversees development of programs to educate residents about fire and life safety. Whereas Major Marshick developed the OK Child Program, educating children on motor vehicle safety, fire and burn prevention, choking, poisons, falls, firearm safety, bike and pedestrian safety, water safety and severe weather. Whereas the major's OK Child Program has been implemented in several schools and is available online to every resident in Oklahoma. Whereas the major was also an integral part of developing the Citizens' Fire Academy, working diligently with other departments to provide a better experience for participants. The major works hard to create an atmosphere where citizens have a true experience of the firefighting profession. The major served in many positions for the fire department, including company officer and community risk reduction officer. Whereas this council desires to recognize Major Louis Marshick for his dedication, professionalism and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Major Louis Marshick, 2018 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club firefighter of the year.
Well, we're very proud of our fire department and our citizen survey every year tells us that the citizens of Oklahoma City are as well and you are the finest example of the fire department, at least for 2018 and we're very proud of you and grateful for your service. And with that, is there a motion? I'll turn this way. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and you are the firefighter of the year.
I just wanted to give a quick thanks to our fire department. We learned day one in our job that success as a fire department isn't an individual process, it's as a team. And I know there's a number of guys from our office here that have supported this program and the programs that were mentioned, I'm truly grateful. And it goes all the way up to the chain. If we don't have support from our leadership, like my supervisor, Chief Berry, Chief Thompson and our fire chief, Chief Kelly, then these programs are basically dead in the water. So we're very grateful for everybody there. And then my main support system at home, I want to thank my lovely wife, Pat. She's been huge even with this program also. So thank you Officer Quanis and thank you very much.
Now, if our police officer of the year, Lieutenant George, would come forward. And to learn a little bit more about you, I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Lieutenant Audrey George has been a city employee for 21 years and works in the police department's uniform support division as the special events supervisor. Whereas Lieutenant George works countless evenings and weekends leading a team of officers during all special events, dignitary protection details, First Amendment events and escorts. Whereas Lieutenant George ensures special event coordinators and parade organizers comply with all the safety conditions related to police assistance. Whereas the lieutenant reviews requests for police assistance, determines the level of assistance needed, completes manpower requests for personnel, creates and executes traffic plans, directs and manages the OCPD ambassador activities and assists with coordination for intelligence gathering. Whereas the lieutenant performs her duties in a professional manner, avoiding significant incidents while overseeing hundreds of special events annually and ensuring public safety and seamless operations. Whereas Lieutenant George is instrumental in assisting with road closures, particularly during the OKC streetcar rail construction. Whereas the council desires to recognize Lieutenant George for her dedication, professionalism and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Lieutenant George, 2018 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Police Officer of the Year.
All that I said about the fire department is equally true of the police department. One of the finest, exactly equally true. You're like siblings. None is better than the other. Finest department in the nation and the citizens clearly agree. Let's see if the council agrees as well. We've got a motion in a second, let's cast our votes. Passes unanimously, you are the police officer of the year. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. I have some really great people that I work with that make it all possible. Steve and Jesse, I couldn't do this job without you. I have an extended family of people that I work with, all the PSTs, the bike officers, the motors. And not only that, I have a great chain of command. I couldn't do this job without the support of my captain, my major, my chiefs. I appreciate you. I thank you for having the trust in me to do this job day in and day out. To the Quanis Club, thank you very much. And in addition, I work with some really great departments in the city, the Streetcar Embark, Special Events, Drew Watson, the different event organizers that I get to work with day in and day out. They are what makes this city what it is today. I really thank everyone so much and thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you to all our employees. That was a fun presentation and we do enjoy very much the monthly employee of the month tradition that we have here. And again, I'll say what I said earlier, we have the finest city employees in the nation. We have one last remaining item, if I, under office of the mayor, if I would invite Roberta to come forward and do you want to bring all your folks up?
Sure.
Yeah, come on up, everybody. In Oklahoma City, we know about acts of evil that we never want to forget because we never want them to be repeated. And so it is most fitting that this morning we have a few words for International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And with that, I might ask the clerk to read this proclamation so we can learn a little bit more about that.
Whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights proclaims that everyone is entitled to all rights and freedoms set forth therein, without distinction of any kind, such as race, religion, gender, heritage or other status, as the declaration's preamble states that disregarding contempt for human rights have resulted in various acts that have outraged the conscience of mankind, such as the Holocaust. Whereas in 2005, the United Nations General Assembly designated January 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day to urge all nations to observe the day of commemoration so that future generations can both prevent and be spared from the acts of genocide. Whereas International Holocaust Remembrance Day is an annual day of commemoration for the victims of the Holocaust, a tragedy in which nearly six million Jews were targeted and persecuted by the Nazi regime and its collaborators during World War II and is a day in which we must reassert our commitment to human rights, serving as a reminder of the universal lessons of the Holocaust, an evil which cannot simply be consigned to the past and forgotten. Now therefore David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim January 27th, 2019 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in Oklahoma City and he urges citizens to recognize the importance of promoting human dignity, confronting hatred and preventing genocide worldwide.
Thank you. Roberta Clark is the head of the Jewish Federation here in Oklahoma City and brought some folks and if you wouldn't mind maybe introducing them and then also saying a few words.
Sure, thank you mayor. Rabbi Varit Harris from Tabor B'nai Israel, my colleague Rachel Johnson from the Jewish Federation and Mike Cornblatt, a Holocaust educator and child of Holocaust survivors. And I'm grateful that they all came out early this morning. The Holocaust isn't just a horrific part of Jewish history, it's a horrific part of humankind history. And so we're so grateful to you mayor and to you city council for making sure we recognize this day here in our city and it's one of many great examples from all of you of not just recognizing but embracing diversity in our city and recognizing that there are moments both of celebration and of sadness that as a community, when we embrace them together, we get to know each other better and we make for a better community. So we, I thank you and I know the rest of the Jewish community thanks all of you for your leadership. Thank you so much.
Let's thank Roberta and her team for all that they do in our city. I found time over the holidays to make another round of appointments. All of these continue to maintain my philosophy of bringing the diversity of our city into our decision-making process and building a bigger table so that all the city feels a part of what we're doing here. I want to draw your attention to one in particular, one appointment in particular that is actually a little different than the rest in that it is, it is an appointment to a new government that we agreed to join a couple of months ago and that is the Regional Transit Authority. Unlike the other appointments, which are really sort of creatures of the city, this Regional Transit Authority will bring together Oklahoma City, Edmund, Yukon, not Yukon, sorry about that, they declined. Just rattling off cities randomly. Specifically Edmund, Norman, Moore, Midwest City and Dell City with our city to look at commuter transit in our region. This has been 10 years in the making and it will be many more years before it really, you know, you really see the results. But it is a huge endeavor. As I said, it really is creating a new government. I felt we needed people of great credibility and great experience to do that and I was thrilled that former Governor Brad Henry has agreed to serve as well as longtime civic leader Mary Malone, who has served on several of our boards in the past. And so their appointment is here as well, under item 3M. And I'm open to any questions or comments, but I believe we can take all of these appointments, all of these items as one motion. So that would be from item 3D through 3N. Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four, Journal of Council Proceedings, items A and B, we could take that with one motion. Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item five, requests for uncontested continuances and as I turn to the city manager, I should point out, this was the first agenda in the history of our city that said Craig Freeman at the bottom, so this is your first official meeting as city manager, so congratulations. We had you swearing in on January 2nd and we're thrilled that you're now officially in the seat. And with that, what are our uncontested continuances?
So we have several today. On page 15, item 9F1. This item will strike, this item, the owner has removed. It's item 9F1H and it's 905 Southeast 15th Street.
Got it.
On page 14. On page 14.
Yeah.
On page 16, let me check and make sure I've got it right now. Item 9G1, that's on page 15, 9G1. Item B, 3120 North Barnes Avenue will strike to re-notify. Item C, 1616 Southwest Bird Street, strike to, the owner has secured. Item D, 9106 North Classen Boulevard will strike, the owner has secured. Item H, 1228 Southwest Grand Boulevard will strike this item, the owner has secured. Item J, 1537 South Irving Street will strike this item because the owner has secured. On, item R is Southeast 15th, 615 Southeast 10th Street will strike this item to re-notify the owner. Item S, 2805 Northwest 12th Street, strike this item, the owner has secured. Item V, 4042 Northwest 18th Street is stricken, owner has secured. Item X, 631 Northwest 20th Street, stricken, the owner has secured. Item Y, 2712 Northwest 23rd Street, stricken, owner is removed. Item seven, I mean, I'm sorry, item Z, 101 Southeast 26th Street will strike this item, the owner has secured. Item AB, 1809 Northwest 28th Street, the owner has secured. Item AC, 3620 Southwest 38th Street, the owner has secured. Item AJ, 1119 Southeast 66th Street, the owner has secured. Item AO, 521 Northwest 114th Street will strike this item also, the owner has secured. So all those items are stricken. On page 17, item 9H1B, these items are all stricken. This is item B, 3120 North Barnes Avenue to re-notify the owner. Item C, 1616 Southwest Bird Street, the owner has secured. Item E, 1228 Southwest Grand Boulevard, the owner has secured. Item G, 1537 South Irving Street, the owner has secured. Item P, 615 Southeast 10th Street, the owner, to re-notify the owner. Item U, 4042 Northwest 18th Street, the owner has secured. Item X, 631 Northwest 20th Street, the owner has secured. Item AA, 2712 Northwest 23rd Street, the owner is secure, the owner removed. Item AD, 101 Southeast 26th Street, the owner secured. Item AE, 1809 Northwest 28th Street, the owner secured. Item AG, 3620 Southwest 38th Street, the owner has secured. Item AK, 1119 Southeast 66th Street, the owner has secured. Item AO, 521 Northwest 114th Street, the owner has secured. We also have on, on page 19, item N, we had an executive session on a labor issue, on arbitration with IFF and we still have some issues to work out on that, so we need to strike that item as well. So it's item 9M and that is all the items I have.
All right, thank you. It sounds like the hardware stores ran out of plywood this weekend. Thank you very much. Okay, revocable permits, item 6, 6A is revocable right-of-way use permit with the OKC Martin Luther King Jr. Coalition to hold the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Parade on January 21st. Do we have anyone to speak? All right, Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you mayor, I really appreciate it. I just want to cause, call attention to the fact that the route has changed slightly. In the past, this parade has always gone down, traveled down Broadway and it has been moved to travel along North Walker Avenue between 6th and West Reno. So just to be sure everybody's aware, it's got a slightly new route. It's exciting, wonderful day and I would move approval.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to page three on your printed agenda, we'll recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority where we have items A, B and C we can take with one motion. Got a motion? Second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority where we have items A through C, which we can take with one motion. And this also includes one of my appointments because they fall under PPA. We've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust where we have two items. Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the city council where we find ourselves on page four on your printed agenda with the consent docket. We've got a motion in a second, subject to individual consideration and I know we have a presentation on item 7Q.
Right, that's an item that we had, an amended item that came out to the council in the pack and was posted and Chris Browning is here to give a presentation on that one.
And then is there any other item? I know that Councilman Stonecifer, would you want to say something about W?
Okay.
Okay. And is there anyone else who wants to pull anything out to discuss? Okay, well we'll take them in order then. So Q, Chris Browning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good morning. There are three lagoons just north of the Heffner Water Treatment Facility that were previously used to store lime sludge generated during the water treatment process. Those lagoons are no longer necessary because we installed a mechanical dewatering system. So in accord with Oklahoma DEQ, we have developed a closure plan for those lagoons which would involve removing the lime sludge, drying it, capping the lagoons for use for other purposes. So we, during the development of the project, we put a bid out and the bid documents required the contractors to present a plan and a schedule for the work. During that work, the process would generate a lot of noise and a lot of dust and those lagoons are located in close proximity to a neighborhood and also a school and they circle one of our soccer complexes. And so we wanted to get the project done as quickly as possible, we put a July 31 deadline on the project. So we received the bids on January 3rd. We had five bidders. Three of the five submitted a plan where they would have the project completed near the end of the year. One of the bidders provided a description with no schedule and the fifth bidder didn't provide a plan or a schedule. So at this time, we believe that it would be in the best interest of the city to rebid with a revised schedule. What we would like to do is close the large lagoon first and we would like to have it closed by the end of August so that at least we get done with that not too, too long after school starts. And then the second two lagoons, the smaller lagoons that are immediately adjacent to the water plant would be closed by the end of the year. So with that, we would recommend that council considers rejecting all bids and enabling us to rebid the project with a revised schedule and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have in relation to the project. that you may have in relation to the project.
I think it's a good idea of timing sequence. That makes it more feasible for us to get that done properly and stay on track with what other things are going on out there.
And I'd point out, this item was, was changed in the process but was properly noticed, and you have a supplementary, supplementary sheet here that has the, the item as it should be approved. Any discussion on that? Okay.
Thank you.
And Councilman Stonecifer, you want to lead the discussion on seven W?
Sure. Thank you very much. Today we have on item seven W, a resolution accepting a $50,000 donation from Wilderness Matters, which this organization has done incredible work out at Martin Nature Park, improvements including a boardwalk overlook and educational navigation systems. And we're specifically, what we're doing today with this $50,000, or what Wilderness Matters is helping us to do, is help with the visually impaired using the Jim Thorpe Rehabilitation Courage Trail in Martin Nature Park. It's kind of interesting. Originally, the trail was called Trail A. Not too exciting. Today, it's known as the Jim Thorpe Rehabilitation Courage Trail, and we just want to welcome Wilderness Matters here today and say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Hi, I'm Peter Hoffman. I'm co-founder and chairman of the Board of Wilderness Matters, and I want to introduce, I want to introduce my awesome board here. We have Tricia Everest right there, Vice Chairman Marty Ferretti, Secretary Nancy Herzl, Treasurer, and of course, even though he isn't part of our board, City Employee Scott Copeland, who works with the Park Department, who has been unbelievable this whole time working, and of course Doug, Doug Cupfer in helping it all. But this represents a continuation of our effort together, and it's been so wonderful. It's been five years and almost a million dollars since we decided in our mission to bring the opportunity to experience nature to all people, including those of other abilities. And so we've begun, as you so well said, Mark, to modify Trail A, which is now the Jim Thorpe Courage Trail, and with the help of our most generous donor, Integris. And we, we need to honor them because they've been incredible in all this. But this is an ongoing, and this particular gift deals with the visually impaired. And so it is our, our thrill, our honor, and our continuing hope that, that you will use this money wisely, and that what we have done in the past with you, this past five years, can be a template, a recipe, a kind of a, a touchstone for others to work in public-private partnerships, to begin to build and create things, and donate it to the city, and lift us all. And so with that, I just want to say thank you for this wonderful partnership we've had. We appreciate you, we respect you, we honor you, we love our city, and we, we're hoping that more can happen in the future. Thank you.
Peter, I just would like to say how much we appreciate it. I can't believe it's been five years since Jack McMahon came to me and, you know, asked how we could perhaps do something up at Martin Nature Park.
It's been amazing. And these four, right there, these three ladies there are truly unbelievable, everybody. Unbelievable.
Thank you.
May I add one other thing? As a result of this and other things that occurred out at the park, today, out of the 169 parks in Oklahoma City, Martin Nature Park is the number one attended park in...
All right. See? It's working. It's working. It's working.
All right. Any other discussion on that item?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Well, we haven't voted yet. You might want to stick around.
No, we don't. We don't say that.
We do have a motion and a second on the table for all of the items under the consent docket. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are glad to have your gift. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And the first for me, we have nothing under the concurrence docket, which brings us to page 11, item nine, items requiring separate votes. So items A, one, two, and three, and items B, one, two, and three, I believe are all related to the proposed home sharing ordinance that has been deferred multiple occasions, but I think we might be at a, at a decision point today. And to kind of lay that groundwork for us, we have Laura McDevitt from the municipal councillor's office to tell us where we are today.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Since these two home sharing ordinances were first introduced, there have been a number of meetings with various stakeholder groups: historic preservation neighborhood representatives, hotel motel association representatives, local Airbnb hosts, and Airbnb corporate representatives. Over that time, a number of changes have been proposed, which are reflected in the amendments that are before you today. I'll start by highlighting the changes to the zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment distinguishes between residential districts citywide and all nine of the city's historic preservation districts. In residential districts citywide, if the property is the host's primary residence, the host is permitted to conduct home sharing on his or her property after obtaining a license. The host is not required to be on-site at the time of rental. If the property is not the host's primary residence, the host must obtain a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment can consider the specifics of each application and place additional conditions on the, his home sharing use. Special exceptions expire after a period of non-use and may be granted for a maximum period of 10 years. In historic preservation districts, hosts must obtain a special exception, the property must be his or her primary residence, and the host must be on-site at the time of rental. All of that said, all current hosts who have conducted home sharing prior to today would not be required to obtain a special exception prior to acquiring a license. Next, I'll highlight the changes to the licensing ordinance. First, tenants would be able to apply for a license upon providing documentation of property owner permission. Also, we've clarified that a separate license is required for each property. Also, applicants must document proof of ownership, proof that the property is his or her primary residence, and attest that the property has a fire extinguisher and a carbon monoxide detector. Third, two or more convictions relating to the property within 24 months are grounds for suspension or revocation of the license. And lastly, the fee for special exceptions has been reduced from $1,200 to $300 for home sharing. If council has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
The... So you're grandfathering in anyone who's currently engaged in home sharing?
Correct.
And how is that determined?
So the applicant would need to provide documentation to Development Services, some sort of like listing with previous reviews, or receipts from Airbnb, or whatever platform they use, to document that they have conducted it prior to today.
So it could be any platform, not just Airbnb?
Right.
Okay, so they, okay. So anyone who's currently engaged in home sharing is exempted from the...
The special exception requirement.
Okay. Whether they're in a HP district or not?
Correct.
And does, will that ever expire?
If, it is not used, if they, if a host stops conducting home sharing for a period of two years, then it would lose its non-conforming status, and then they would have to reapply for a special exception at that point if they wanted to conduct home sharing in the
Any other questions for Laura? We have some comments from, from citizens, so we want to get to that, but if you have anything for Laura right now. Okay. All right, thank you, Laura. Well, we'll start with Eric Groves. If you would come forward. And if anyone wants to speak, I would, there's still time. I would advise them to fill out one of these yellow slips outside and hand it in.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. I appear on behalf of the Edgemere Neighborhood Association. We support this ordinance. A great deal of effort has gone into it. A lot of people have been involved in the process. But I would like to reserve my remarks to rebut any objections to the ordinance. But mainly, I wanted to tell you that Edgemere is all for it, and Mr. Box will speak on behalf of his client. So if there are challenges to this, we'd like to be heard on them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. David Box?
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I am here this morning on behalf of Heritage Hills, and as Mr. Grove said, I want to thank everybody that spent a great deal of time and effort to get to this point. This ordinance has been in the works perhaps for a year at this point, at all of the Planning Commission, HP, all the design review districts, and then once it left Planning Commission, a lot of work and effort has been, been had by staff and, and members of council. At the outset, I think it's important to note, you know, one of the fears all along was preemption at the, at the state legislature. What would Airbnb say? Now, obviously, this, this regulates all short-term rentals, all home sharing platforms, but the concern because of what had happened in other jurisdictions was, what would Airbnb think? So a lot of effort's been made to reach out to them. It is worth noting that the current amendments proposed have received support from Airbnb. In your packet, you will see a letter that Airbnb corporate sent, and they are in support of the current draft of the ordinance. So I do think that is important. I think that is a substantial move in the right direction, based upon the fears that we had. One of the things I do want to address, because I think we're going to potentially hear it, is why, why is it that the HP districts are being treated differently and/or is that somehow create legal problems? The answer is no, it doesn't create legal problems. I do want to direct you to the back of your packet on page 26, the staff report. You will note that the Assistant Municipal Councillor Laura McDevitt, who you just heard from, has reviewed the ordinance for form and legality. In addition, I think it's important to note that the city itself has treated HP districts differently dating back to 1969. So since 1969, the city through the ordinance, ordinances, has always treated HP areas a little differently. What it typically means is there are extra burdens when you live in an HP neighborhood. If you want to change your windows, you don't get to go to the eighth floor and get a permit. Instead, you get to come and stand right here at this podium and argue your case in front of a horseshoe full of people as to why you should be able to change your windows, or paint your house, or all of the other things. So it's important to note that the HP ordinance dating back to 1969 has treated different areas of the city differently. There is nothing unconstitutional, there's nothing illegal about that. It is within your purview as a governing body of this city to decide what ordinances are proper and just, and I would submit that what is proposed within the amendment number one certainly meets that criteria. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Again, I want to thank everybody that spent a great deal of time and effort on this, and I think it is to a point now where I think most people are, are happy and satisfied, and importantly, Airbnb has, has submitted a letter in support. So thank you so much for your time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for David right now? Okay. Melissa Parker?
Actually, she can answer my question.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the efficiency. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
I am Linda Lowe. I live in the West Nichols Hills area on Wilshire Boulevard, and there are at least two on my street Airbnbs, and that one to my immediate east and one two doors to the west. My concern is, is that I'm a citizen of this city, and I live in an R1 area, and I would have assumed that I could live there and not have a business open up beside me. And whatever we want to say, we're talking a business enterprise when we use a home to rent, and we're absent, we're not sharing a home, and we're using the word "home" rather than "house." I like to think that we can treat all neighborhoods the same. We're not talking a historical change. There's no challenge to that. We all agree to those parameters. But we're talking about the use of our neighborhood, how it is used. This separates us, not on architectural or historical grounds, but on just use. And I think the procedure, whatever we do, should be equal to all. I'm not an attorney. I have volunteered with the county bar for years. I believe in justice and fairness, and I don't think this is represented here. I would ask you to reconsider it, and our neighborhood association was not advised of this. And we had, I called and asked when they had concluded their preparations that all neighborhoods, all be advised of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Doobie Potter?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name is Doobie Potter, and I live at 1845 Northwest 11th. I'm the corner of 11th and Kentucky. I used to say I lived in the northwest hood, but now I say I live in the Plaza District. And I have a five-plex that we've owned for 20, well, 30 years now. And we occupy two apartments, and three of the apartments are now Airbnbs. And I also have three Airbnbs on, in the western corridor, on the corner of Francis and Eubanks, a duplex, and a little tiny house. And I just wanted to represent hosts of Airbnbs. And my friend Story here, who's also co-host, three of my Airbnbs. My husband and I are property owners. We're both self-employed, and we've turned these rental properties into Airbnbs. We make our living doing this. We don't have any retirement. We play the Monopoly game, I call it, for retirement. We don't make, we don't make a lot of profit doing Airbnbs, but I am totally involved, and it's just so much easier than dealing with tenants who have excuses when it comes the first of the month on why they can't pay rent. Airbnb company takes care of everything. They, all they do is send, I just say how much I want to rent it for, they put the money in my bank account. I am totally involved in screening every guest that I have and decide whether I, I read their reviews. I don't let anybody in there that doesn't have a review unless I know why they're coming to the city. I've had several guests that are now homeowners in the city because they're transferring here from another state, and they're looking for temporary housing while they find houses. I have small oil and gas companies that bring in employees for training that end up staying here, and, and they need a place to stay while they're being trained until they find apartments and houses to rent or buy. So I'm really for Airbnbs, and I want to make it easy for Airbnb hosts that are involved in, in all their rentals and their guests, and try to make it safe and good for the whole neighborhood. Any questions for a host?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, Suzanne Broadbent, 3625 North McKinley. Been here a few times on this issue. I just want to make it very brief. I have reviewed what is proposed this morning and feel that it's a really good effort, and I would appreciate your support for it. Just want to commend Councillor Stonecifer and Salyer for their leadership on this issue and the staff who worked really hard. I believe we've come to a good proactive resolution that protects our neighborhoods and also makes it possible for our Airbnb. And I should, I want to emphasize, all our hosts are not Airbnb. Some of them are on Craigslist, some of them are on, you know, charity options, et cetera. So what Airbnb does with their hosts is fine, but we needed some other protection from, for the public, to make sure our, our home sharing hosts are vetted and reputable, and I think this is a reasonable effort in that regard. I don't have anything else to say except to ask your support and thank you for your work.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
I'm Joel Hild. I'm 917 Northwest 39th Street. I'm a owner of multiple Airbnbs in the city, and that is my only income. I'll flip houses, but mainly it's Airbnb and taking care of them. I had 10 monthly rentals, and they just destroyed the houses. So finding an opportunity to switch something that I could really take care of was a boon to the neighborhoods, boon to the city. I challenge anyone to know, if, if they weren't told it was an Airbnb, Airbnb, they wouldn't know. Airbnb is all about choice. You want a suite to sleep in, you want a Motel 6 to sleep in, you want a single room to slip, sleep in, or do you want an entire house? to sleep in, or do you want an entire house, fully, like a condo? And what's to keep VRBO out, Booking.com out? I believe we're being targeted specifically because it's something new, and some, only a couple people have complained about this, and I challenge them, how do they even know if they weren't told? And how do you plan to enforce this? You wouldn't know one of my Airbnb's if I took you to it. So, it's unfair targeting the Airbnb owners, your historic preservation districts are being chosen for this, and it's unfair that we're not equalizing this across the city. And that's pretty much all I got.
So, what are your thoughts about this restricting home-sharing to you being there at the same time as the people renting?
It's not possible. I live in one house. I have six Airbnb's. Can't live in them all, and my homes are the nicest homes on the neighborhood. I fix up homes on both sides of me, both across the street from me, so we get this oasis in the middle of the street, and then it takes on down the streets. We've improved so many neighborhoods by our Airbnb's, by taking these crappy little houses and turn them into genuine oasis, that it's the choice. They want to bring their families, they want the kids to run on the floor, they want their dog in their house. It's a choice that you're taking away from them by unnecessarily having everyone register. Did they register back in the '30s when they had all these Airbnb, or all these multiplexes all over the town? All through Heritage Hills, they were all duplexes, and they didn't have any kind of...
Zoning requirements.
Yeah. So, that's how I'm seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Littlefield?
Good morning.
Morning.
Rob Littlefield, 1148 Northwest 56th Street. I really just have some questions, and I apologize for getting here a little late. They may have already been answered. But the questions that I have... If, if you own a property, you live in the main house, and you have a guest house or a garage apartment in back, is that considered owner-occupied under this ordinance?
Laura, are you able to answer that?
Yes, that would qualify.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. What about the situation where you own an apartment building, and you have 10 units in it, and two units are Airbnb units? How does that property owner operate under this ordinance?
Laura?
So, if the property owner is currently conducting home-sharing, they'd be grandfathered in, it would be permitted to continue, but for new properties, the property owner would have to get a special exception for each unit within the building.
What if they lived in the building?
Then the primary residence is still only one unit out of the 10.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. With the special exception permit going before the Board of Adjustments, I've had experience where, in the PUD/SPOD process, a speculator who wants to buy a property, convert, let's say, a humongous house into a boutique hotel or something like that, they're afforded the opportunity to go before the Planning Commission and the City Council and seek approval or denial for their project prior to buying it. So, in the Board of Adjustments process, if there's somebody that's speculating, wanting to move forward and buying more of these properties and converting them to Airbnb's, before they buy the property, are they able to seek approval or denial at the Board of Adjustments to make a decision whether or not they want to buy the property and fulfill their mission?
The applicant would need to have property owner permission, so whoever the seller is could, you know, sign a letter of support saying that they are speaking on their behalf, and the new prospective buyer would be able to submit an application to the Board of Adjustment.
I'm not real sure that we understand that the 10-year sunset clause in the Board of Adjustments decisions and the grandfathering. There are neighborhoods in Oklahoma City that have uncurbed roads, for example, and their driveways are not required to be paved, they can be gravel, and that's grandfathered forever. C-floor zoning, for example, when the zoning levels were established way back, I don't know what year those were, but they were grandfathered to be C-floor zoning forever until something changed. Where did the 10-year sunset clause come from, and why is that considered necessary?
So, special exceptions, just as a general principle, have some sort of end time period. So, whether it's a special exception for a medical hardship to allow a second dwelling on a piece of property, that has a, those can be granted for one, two, or three years. So, this is, the 10-year requirement was something that was put into this ordinance specifically for home-sharing, and the board would have flexibility whether they wanted to grant the special exception for anywhere between one and 10 years.
So, 10 years was just arbitrarily decided upon?
I think that that was something that was considered about what would be an appropriate length of time when it might be appropriate for the board to reconsider that use in that neighborhood, because dynamics of the area could change substantially over that period.
Okay. Just give me one moment. Because I was late, and I apologize for that, I may have missed the part where Edgemere Heights or Edgemere Park and Heritage Hills neighborhoods, it says in your agenda that there is no non-owner-occupied venue possibilities in those two neighborhoods. Is that still a condition?
The amendments that are on the agenda today, the first one is the one that treats all historic preservation neighborhoods equally. The second one is also still on today's agenda, and that singles out Heritage Hills and Edgemere Park. I think the council will be deciding whether or not to proceed with that amendment also.
And our group feels that if we're going to go with a special exception permit and a Board of Adjustments decision whether or not to grant that, that alone should be enough to give historic preservation neighborhoods the opportunity to protest and decide whether or not they want these things in their neighborhood. It doesn't seem fair that it would automatically be, that you can't do it in those neighborhoods. The Board of Adjustments should be able to make that decision for those neighborhoods, in my opinion, in the opinion of our group.
Laura, you can go to the Board of Adjustment for all of these...
Right.
Issues. It just means you have to go for more.
Right, but, but non-owner-occupied would be a consideration in those two neighborhoods?
You could go get an exception for that.
Okay.
There are different standards for the historic preservation neighborhoods that the, they are required to get a special exception. It also must be owner-occupied, and the owner must be on-site at the time of rental. Those are standards that are written into the special exception provisions in the code, and if an applicant were to choose, they could also apply for a variance from those standards if they had special circumstances.
I think of particular interest to me personally is that the language of owner-occupied specifically in the ordinance includes a guest house or a garage apartment. I think it should be written in there so that there's no question in the future about that concern. And that would be if, if it's, like, for example, one of the properties that I have, I own the whole property, I live in the main house, the back house is a guest house, but it has its own address, and that's a concern to me. That sometime down the road, that could be considered non-owner-occupied. So, I think, I think I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question? Because I, just because I know you've had years and years of experience with this, and I use Airbnb a lot. I use it with my three teenage children. And to me, one of the primary decisions, it seems like, on Airbnb and other platforms is, do you want the owner to be there while you're there? I personally would never in a million years go to a place with my three teenage children where adults were in the place with us. That, to me, seems like it strikes at the very core of the whole home-sharing industry, that you're saying you can't, you have to have people there with you at the same time you are with your children. That's never going to happen, so that eliminates, that just, to me, seems like it strikes at the core. So, what, what are you and your group? There is also, when I was going through the data, I mean, I'd like to see, like, some data justifying or coming up with these. To me, it seemed like there was more crime, more complaints, when you had the people renting there at the same time as the owners, and there was less crime when it wasn't necessarily the owner there at the same time. What are your thoughts?
I've been up here before, you folks, many times on this, and I've been before the Planning Commission on this. This is a dream come true way of renting property for a lot of property owners. It's a dream come true for the neighborhoods that they're in, and we have to confine this discussion to Oklahoma City. Every city is different. But in Oklahoma City, this provides an opportunity for a property owner who owns a rental property to make it really awesome, like Joe Hild was saying, and rent it to an entire family for less than a 30-day period. No, not only would I not rent a place where the owner lived, I wouldn't rent my place and have a family staying with me. This is another form of renting property. That's the way I've always looked at it, that's the way our group has always looked at it. I didn't want to go this far, but we've got, in this ordinance, an element that says that if you have two zoning code violations within a two-year period, you lose your license. I believe that's the one there.
Those are grounds for suspension or revocation, and prior to any kind of suspension or revocation, the property owner would get notice and have an opportunity to be heard at the License Appeals Board.
Basically what I said.
The language says "may not shall."
Right.
Okay.
And Robert says convictions.
Right.
So...
In the mainstream rental arena in Oklahoma City, directly across the street from my house where I live in Meadowbrook Acres, there is a home that has been abandoned for 20-something years. Our neighborhood has worked, the Action Center, we've met over there with Charles Locke hundreds and hundreds of times, code violations after code violations after code violations, and it's still there. And we've walked the walk on this property. I'm not understanding why abandoned properties and rental properties are not going under any kind of scrutiny like Airbnb's are today. It's not making sense to me, it's not making sense to this group, but apparently we have to do something. Owner-occupied's not going to work. It just isn't going to work. And what is the threat? What's the problem? What, you know, we, we're saying, the HP neighborhoods are saying, "We don't want commercial entities in our neighborhoods," and they're calling this a commercial operation. I've read so much since October IRS language that, believe me, I'm no professional in any way, shape, or form. The Internal Revenue Service defies rental property as one of two things, a business or an investment. If it's a business, you get to take all the deductions, electricity, heat and air, repairs, lawn mowing. If it's an investment, you don't get to, you don't get to duck those items. Who owns rental property that isn't running a business? I hope I've answered your questions. I feel as though every entity that's been involved in this ordinance over the months has had an opportunity to speak, aired their concerns, and here we are today. I'm going to own three Airbnb's for the rest of my life, and I'm going to operate them one way or another, and I'm only going to be able to live in one of them, and they'll run my retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Liv Tegnou? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Liv Tegnou, 3720 Northwest 69 Terrace. The only question I have is, will the grandfather clause, is that for the property owner or the actual company, the person, or the property? So, for the grandfather, for the grandfather clause, is that, does that encompass the property, the person, or the company?
The non-conforming use runs with the property.
With each property?
Okay.
And each property is, because within Airbnb, I don't believe, you don't have to have the full property address on it?
So, each property owner who's conducting home-sharing on the property would be required to come in and get a license, so that's how the city would be tracking whether or not that property had the non-conforming use and was grandfathered in under this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve Corbett?
My name is Steve Corbett. I live at 2846 Guilford Lane. I'm the president of the Nichols Hills Suburban Neighborhood Association, and I only just walked in the door, so I don't know where everybody stands on this, but I just had a question about why the historic preservation neighborhoods are being treated a little bit more different than the regular neighborhoods. Our neighborhood, which is about 350, 375 homes, basically has the same characteristics. We have large lots, we have fairly large homes, some small homes, some large homes, and I just wonder why we're being treated differently, we're not given the same considerations as the historic neighborhoods. I'd like to request kind of a deferral on the whole issue so we can kind of monitor our neighborhood association, our members, so we can kind of get a feel on how they feel on the, on the whole issue of renting homes to neighbors that are, the homes are vacant. I think our neighborhood, if we fall in this second category, our homes don't need to be occupied. We have some vacant, we have a lot of vacant properties in our neighborhood, kind of going through a transitional period. Tear down a home and build a nice big one. We fought the gated communities successfully so far, but this is just an issue that I was wondering if we could get a little feel for, since, and all the neighborhood associations probably haven't been able to monitor the Airbnb since it's kind of a, kind of a recent issue that's come up, and so I think if the neighborhood associations can try to get a feel for how their homeowners feel toward the issue, I don't think it'd hurt to defer it six weeks to get a survey, maybe. I mean, that's what our neighborhood is going to do. We're going to, we've got a, I don't know if our one homeowner was here, she's got a couple B&B's next to her.
You already spoke?
Okay, so, I don't want to reiterate exactly what she said, but that's just how I feel, and I thought I was, would be present to represent our neighborhood association on the matter. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Anybody questions? No? Thank you. Story Reed?
I'm Story Reed. My address is 5820 Southeast 7th Street, and I've just gotten started into the Airbnb home-sharing business just this last year, and it's been a really good experience for me and my daughters. We do this business together, I have three teenage daughters, and I will say that, as a host, I rent properties and then, you know, turn them into Airbnb's, and the amount of upfront investment it requires to do that, the personal touch it requires to do that, in creating a space that people feel comfortable and at home away from home, I feel... I feel that it's a great asset to any neighborhood because what a rental can turn into with a long-term rental, and what it can look like even just from driving by, how it can run down, and also the interior of a home versus the level that I'm required to maintain a home as a host to satisfy my guests, you know, the level of maintenance is much higher. So I feel that it's a huge asset to a homeowner, to a neighborhood, and so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. That's all the people that have signed up to speak. Eric, I know you had exhibited an interest in rebuttal, if necessary. Is there anything?
Just a few responses to what's been said. I'll try to be brief. I want to emphasize what David said about the difference between neighborhoods and HP districts. We've been an HP district in Edgmere since the 1970s. We are highly regulated. The object of historic preservation is preservation. The object is to preserve those homes, not only for the sake of that neighborhood, but for the sake of the city. And in order to do that, we have a regulatory system that requires us to maintain those properties. We have our own commission, the HP Commission, and changes are not permitted to the exterior of these structures, except upon issuance of a certificate of appropriateness. So there are burdens to owning property in these districts. There are also benefits. We are pretty much free from any kind of commercial encroachment. And the benefit is, and yours not only to the folks who live there, but to the city as a whole. So HP districts are different. And there's no unlawful or unconstitutional basis for challenging the difference between one district and another. All our zoning districts are different. And they're, in this case, they're custom tailored for the kind of property that we have. So I don't see any potential for a challenge to this kind of ordinance. And I also want to say that we need to keep in mind, and as you heard from the various speakers, this is an economic matter. Folks make money from BnBs. And we're not outlawing them with this ordinance. We're simply regulating them. So that if you want to be in that business, you should have the support of your neighbors. And if neighbors are opposed to it, they'll have an opportunity to object. That's not an unreasonable regulatory system. And the difference between most neighborhoods and the HP districts is the reasons I've stated. We are a special district, and it's a series of trade-outs. If we want to keep these properties, keep them up for the good of the city, then of course, we have to have some benefits to come with it. Any questions on this? I hope that you'll enact this ordinance. As David and I both said, an awful lot of work went into it, and we're endorsed by the biggest platform for these rentals. And I think this has been a good series of compromises. And I want to thank the members of the council, particularly Sawyer and Stonecifer, for all the hard work they put into it. So this is a good scheme, and I hope that you'll endorse it.
Thank you.
Were you going to say something, Doctor? You're looking at me.
Can't resist. So I'll concede to you that HP districts have, they're treated differently. They have their own regulation. But it seems to me that the point of that regulation is to preserve the historic character of the homes. That's why homeowners have to ask permission to change around their windows, or whether they can do something with the garage, standalone garage in the back. That, it all has to do with the presentation of the home, the exterior, as you pointed out. This, to me, seems to be an abuse of that regulatory body because there's nothing about whether it uses Airbnb that goes to the exterior or the presentation of the home. Like many have said, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know, looking at the home, that it's being used as an Airbnb or the owner is just a regular home. So there's nothing about the home sharing industry that changes the historic nature of the home. And to me, it seems like you're exploiting, or it's an abuse of that HP differentiation.
Not exactly. Please keep in mind that short-term rentals, be they a night or a weekend, are in the nature of transient accommodations. We have a use unit in our code for transient accommodations. If you're doing that, you're running a hotel. And that is a basic change in land use, which we in the HP districts do not prefer. Now, as far as the outside is concerned, you're correct that the HP regulations do pertain to the exterior of the homes, but they also pertain to the neighborhood and to the configuration of the neighborhood. I pointed out before that in Edgmere, for example, on my street, Northwest 35th, these are narrower streets. And we do have an operation on my street. Folks that stay there park on both sides of the street. Makes it difficult for, impossible for more than one car to get through. That's just one example. So transient accommodations do change the character of the area, and we don't prefer them. It's true in Heritage Hills, too. So it's not simply a matter of appearances. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more person sign up to speak, Melinda Irwin. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Hi, Melinda Irwin, 405 Northwest 16th. So I kind of came in late, so I don't want to be redundant. But I am in Heritage Hills. I agree a lot with Mr. Shadid about HP being an exterior thing, not what's going on inside the home. Nothing restricts what people do inside the home, painting it, gutting it, whatever. The only problems I have with this ordinance is the owner occupied. I own a multifamily in Mesa Park, has eight units in it. The only way I could owner occupy it is if my husband lived in our house and I lived in the apartment, which some days might not be a bad idea. And the grandfathering for 10 years, I guess that's just standard because it has to have a limit. The Board of Adjustment, I just have concerns about it and how clear the rules are on what you can do. Because there are, I don't know how many multifamilies there are in Mesa Park and Heritage Hills, but 100, maybe? Do you guys know? No? Because I know there's one in the 700 block, on 17th, in the 300 block. Both neighbors on either side are highly opposed to it, really for no reason. And would they not be able to do it just because the neighbors didn't want it? And Mr. Rose brought up the parking thing. The roughens across the street from me had five kids, five teenagers. There's always been cars in the street. The people that just moved in next door to me have four kids. There's going to be cars in the street. It's a public street. I don't think that that's going to, that my one Airbnb person changes that. So I think that's really all I had. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Looks like David Box would like to make a quick statement.
Yeah, briefly, Your Honor. It's been said that the HP doesn't affect the use of the property. It absolutely does. If you look at the ordinance, if you are zoned HP, there are only six uses contemplated. Whereas if you are zoned R1, there are more than 40 uses contemplated. So it absolutely is a difference in use, not just exterior, as was suggested.
Is there anyone else? Okay. I think there's quite a bit here. And I also want to join others in commending Councilwoman Sawyer and Councilman Stonecifer for your work on this. And it may be best for you to quarterback the path from here, because there are quite a few items on the two pages that this takes up on the agenda.
May I maybe could just make a couple of remarks? I think it's very obvious by the conversation that we've had here today that this discussion is completely polarizing. People are for it, or people are against it. And there's not really a lot of common ground. And I'd like to commend staff incredibly for coming to as close to common ground as we could get. We have tried to create maximum flexibility in this process, and I know it doesn't feel like it to everybody, but even, as was pointed out, where there are restrictions, there is a mechanism to appeal those restrictions and to be allowed to do this. So I'd kind of like to go back to the beginning. I don't want to take a lot of time. But, you know, the reason the city was here is because this is a new idea. This is a new concept. The sharing economy, you know, came to us in lots of ways. It came to us in Uber and Lyft and other ride-sharing vehicles. We worked through that. Took us about three years to get there, and it's taken the same three years to be involved in this form of the sharing economy. We really needed to be here for, we wanted to know who was doing this. You know, at the moment, as was clearly pointed out, you can drive by a house and not know whether or not it's being used as Airbnb. So as at the city level, we felt like we needed to know who was doing it, provide for some level of a license that would give us some oversight opportunity, and to provide an enforcement mechanism. So that if you have a license and you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing and you're getting complaints, we had something we could revoke. I mean, that's basically, I think, why we're here. And then it got a lot more complicated with various constituencies asking for either additional protections or no protections and no regulation. And so we have collectively, Councilman McAteer's been involved as well, have been involved in a giant community conversation. And so did the gentleman that came and asked us to defer it. We've been working on this with neighborhoods for more than a year. And the Hotel Association, who, you know, has an interest, and those people that are doing it. So I'm here to say on my part, I know this isn't perfect. There are lots of things that are going to come up that we're going to have to address. But it's as close to the best compromise that I think we could reach to get something on the books. And so I'm going to vote in favor of it. The grandfather piece is very important to me because those of you that are doing good work, and I, Rob, you know, you're one of them, I see Melinda, I see Nathan here in the audience, we have great operators that do a really good job and are wonderful hosts. This will allow you to continue to do that, and that was a big part of the grandfather clause. So I just want to say that I think we've tried, from a leadership standpoint, to address as many people's concerns as we could. I'm hopeful we can get this on the books. And then, as things don't work out, just like any other ordinance, it can be amended. And we can do something different if it's not working properly. So again, thank you to staff, and that's where I fall on this.
Okay.
Just briefly, I do want to thank Laura and Susan. They did an outstanding job. And I also want to say, I came at this from a little different perspective. A few points. Number one, safety. We have in the ordinance fire extinguisher, carbon monoxide detector, smoke detector. And that's important to me, that we have safety be an emphasis in this ordinance. The second thing is, and I've seen it happen in Oklahoma City before, where we work on something for months and months, and maybe years and years, and just to have the state preempt it. And when you've got a buy-in by so many people, I think that helps avoid that. And so that's where I came at it from. I'd like for us to oversee what's going on, not somebody else oversee what's happening in our city.
Okay. So Meg, you said that property owners can appeal certain things. Can a property owner within an HP district who's applying for a special exception permit try to get the owner occupied restriction? Does Board of Adjustment have the ability to take that off of, where they don't have to be owner occupied?
I'm going to say yes, but I'm going to defer to Laura to make sure she can answer that correctly.
Yes, the owner occupied requirement is one of the standards that goes with the special exception use for home sharing. And so the applicant could apply for a variance from that standard to the special exception use.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
So.
Any other comments or questions before someone starts making motions? Councilman Shadid?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to take a step back and realize that this came about, we've had two complaints after hundreds and hundreds of thousands of transactions. Hundreds and hundreds of transactions, two complaints. So is there a need? Are we going after a problem that isn't there? That's number one. Number two, the owner occupied, I've heard the proponents, we've had multiple meetings, I've never heard the rationale for why that's being singled out, or why. To me, there's data that would suggest we're making a mistake in terms of safety in mandating or making this preference for owner occupied. I've never heard the rationale. I've never seen any data that suggests we should make a preference for owner occupied. I've never heard the rationale. It's a central component of the whole industry. It's one of the principal decisions that you make on Airbnb and other platforms. The idea that I would enter a home with my teenage daughters, and I would find out when I get there, how many adult men are in the home, I mean, I know women can be a problem too, but I'd be concerned about adult men and I, or other teenagers, or I find out who's there when I get there. I mean, it's just, it's preposterous, and I would never do it. And I think it's a safety issue. I don't want other adults in the home with my teenagers. And so I would be precluded from using it in that situation. In terms of the HP ordinances, I think all neighborhoods should be treated the same. I've never heard why this goes to historic preservation. I would not, I think it needs, if this passes, I think it needs to be challenged in the courts. And I've heard from Nichols Hill Suburban Neighborhood, I've heard other in Putnam Heights and other neighborhoods that want to be treated the same. And I would just say, you know, this may need to be challenged in the courts. Don't be intimidated because our municipal councillor's office, it was said that they reviewed it and they said it's legal. Time and time again, we've done this where we say it's okay, and then it gets challenged in the courts, and then our municipal councillor reverses course, like the adult novelty ordinance or the panhandling ordinance. We have these controversial issues. We think it's legal, and then somebody challenges it in the courts, and we reverse course. So I think treat all the neighborhoods the same. I haven't heard a rationale, a good rationale, for why HP districts should be different than Nichols Hill Suburban. And I would just encourage those to challenge that in the court. It's basically, it's private property and it's use of your private property. And I don't think equal protection of the law is being equally applied to all property owners. So I would encourage its challenge in the courts, should this pass today. I think the idea that you're going to grandfather in these hundreds and hundreds of homes, while I applaud that, I think it's great, and it gets political support for this to pass, it undercuts the whole rationale for the argument. I mean, if the argument is that we've got these small streets, which of course are in all 620 square miles, not just in HP districts. But if we're saying that there's a public safety issue, and that there's something inherent damage, inherently damaging to HP districts, and then we're going to grandfather in hundreds of these in HP districts and throughout the city, it undercuts the whole rationale for its passage in the first place. You're just, all this is doing is restricting people going forward. But all the rationale for regulating it is being thrown out the window by grandfathering in hundreds and hundreds of units in these HP districts. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Does anyone want to start the process?
So we're on item 9A1, I believe, and I would make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I apologize. Councilman McAteer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since my name was mentioned, I think I need to speak to this. I think this has proven, this whole issue, is that an individual looks at it from a different set of glasses or a different paradigm. I've heard the preservation that is envisioned in the historic preservation ordinances, I see this as a use preservation, looking at it from a zoning perspective. I see as taking land that was zoned and everybody knew was for residential and encouraging people to move into that land in a commercial environment. So that's the way I approach it. The other way I approach it is balance. You've heard the word compromise. I prefer the word balance. When this whole... When this whole study started, I had some preconceived notions about what was good, bad, and what was indifferent. And as the different people expressed their feelings and expressed their, their point of view, I think what we've gotten here is a good balance of property rights versus use, safety versus expansion, preservation versus moving forward with the times. And so I'm in favor of this on, on those grounds right there. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Sorry, Councilwoman.
That's okay. Item 9A1 is the ordinance that Laura presented to us, and I would move that item.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on 9A1, which is technically an amendment? Okay, seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one.
Okay, so now, item, item 9A2 was an earlier amendment to the original ordinance that exempted just two neighborhoods, Heritage Hills and Edgemere Park, and I would move to strike that.
Second. Motion in a second to strike the amendment from consideration. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. 9A3?
9A3, I would move to approve.
Second. Okay, so this is 9A3. This is the ordinance on final hearing. I assume this is as amended by 9A1. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Brings us to items under B.
And so the 9A B ordinances, one, two, and three relate to the license requirement and the reduction in the fee from $1,200 to $300, if I understand this correctly. So I would move item 9B1, which is the licensing.
Second. Okay. 9B1 is the, is the amendment. It has a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one.
9B2 sets the fee at $300.
That's a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. I'm sorry. And I would move that.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And 9B3?
9B3 is the, relates just to the general schedule of fees in Chapter 13 and 60 of the municipal code, and I would move approval as amended.
Right. This is, thank you. Motion in a second on 9B3. This is now the, the final ordinance on final hearing regarding licensing as amended by 9B1 and 2. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Okay.
Mayor, if I could just, so thank all of the citizens that were involved in this. This was a gigantic process, and citizens and attorneys. I particularly would like to thank the citizen groups. We needed your input, and the result of your comments were incorporated in what we approved today. So I really appreciate everybody's understanding and help us work through this and make it work for everybody.
And the effective dates of these ordinances, I am told, is February 14th, and that concludes our home share ordinance portion of the docket today. If anybody wants to depart, that's, that's the final vote on that topic. All right, we have now item 9C1 and 2. 9C2 is a resolution adopting an assessment role for the Adventure District. There is a public hearing on that topic under 9C1, and we do have someone who has signed up to speak, Mr. Tom Parrish. Tom, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address?
I'm Tom Parrish at 1515 Duttoner Drive, Oklahoma City. I really am a little lost here. I'm a property owner out on, in the Adventure District, about 26 acres, and it seems like last year, the assessment on the Adventure District was one thing, but this year it's increased dramatically. And I've talked to the executive director of the Adventure District in her budgeting, and I guess I'm just a little confused about where all the monies that are allocated to that district, where they're being used. My land is vacant. It's not approved. I don't really have a problem with increases in assessments until improved values are in place. And so I've talked with Tiffany Dor, Dorloff, and what I'm interested in mostly is economic development in that area, and I'd like to see where the funds are being used and how often the board meets, how the board's appointed of this, and how often they meet, and how well-attended those meetings are. And I think they should be open to the property owners, just like this hearing. And that's the only reason I knew that the city sent us a notice about this hearing today.
Well, thank you, Tom. It, it looks like Tiffany from the Adventure District is here, and maybe she can address some of your, some of your questions. Tiffany, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and I presume you listened to his comments and can maybe address that.
Yes. Tiffany Batdorf, and I live at 7819 Harvest Moon Road in Oklahoma City. And we do have two board meetings. We have our Adventure District Board of Executive Directors from some of the attractions, and that also includes some city leaders as well. That group meets quarterly, the third Wednesday of the month, every quarter, and the, which our next meeting will be April, it's in the month of April. I'm not for sure the exact date. We do have a bid board meeting that meets as well. We meet on the second Tuesday of every, every other month, so our next meeting will be March, and we meet at 8:30 in the morning. So we do have those, both of those board meetings are open. We welcome people. We encourage the property owners to attend that so that we can have some input on where those dollars are spent.
Okay. To his specific question about an increase in the assessments.
And as far as the increase in the assessments, I haven't, I don't actually know how it has increased. I know that our budget, that is kind of done off of property value. I don't know if Kim is here. Oh, Kim is here. Kim might be able to help on that. We have the assessment role, but I'm not for sure how that works.
Okay. Good morning. The assessment role for the Adventure District properties has a couple different ways of assessing property. The exempt property, the nonprofit property, is assessed on frontage. It's a certain dollar per foot of frontage on the main streets. The non-exempt property, in other words, the property that has valuation from the county tax assessor, is assessed on the taxable market value. And there's a fraction, I can't remember what it is, it's like .00 something of the, I don't have it in front of me, of the taxable market values. So for every dollar of taxable market value, you're assessed .003 something. Now, some of these properties have gone up and some of these have gone down. Overall, the assessment role this year, I think it's about a couple hundred or a couple thousand dollars less than it was last year. So we've had some variation in that assessed value for those valued properties through the county for the taxable market value. We don't go for the market value, do it based on what people are paying their taxes on. And I think Mr. Parrish's property may have increased in value to a point that it was a noticeable increase in his assessment. That was established with our engineering report in the establishing ordinance.
So it's not an increase in the budget. It's really a matter of the allocation among the properties.
And that naturally will increase the budget, but it's, this year it's not very significant overall.
Okay. Okay. Tom, was that responsive to your questions?
My, my, Tiffany's been very helpful in our telephone conversations. What's interesting, this property, part of it.
If you could step closer to the mic.
What's interesting, this property and part of it was not even assessed a few years ago, or prior to our ownership. The other part is I, I don't know how the board is picked or selected. Maybe you can answer this, or it would seem to me that property owners should have representation on that board, not so much the museums and other nonprofits, I guess, that might be representative on the board. Tiffany has told me, I think, one of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce people are on the board, and I won't say who that is, but, and I think they were director of, but they rarely show up to that. I'm most interested in having the Adventure District giving Tiffany certainly the board guidance in order to promote economic development in that area. And that's where my real concern is. So two questions. How is the board selected? Do you have property owners that are representative on that? Nor do I. And then the, I don't know how that's all compiled. So I don't know who answers that question.
It's my understanding that Mr. Parrish should be very welcome to serve on the bid board.
I've been on a lot of boards, and I'll be a good helper.
Okay. Well, we can put you on a committee too, so.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And again, I'm just here encouraging this Adventure District to be more responsive to the property owners and more notices sent out when the, and boards meet when they meet. And so, and there's some other gentleman here that's gone, that are property owners that I know. I've surveyed the neighborhood as well, and as you know, sometimes that's how we get more communication in the community, is having everyone show up and voice support or concerns. So that's the reason I'm here.
Craig, this is just a public hearing today, right?
Yes.
And so we will have another?
Oh, well, well.
Or is it, is it tied?
C2 is the resolution adopting and confirming, and then?
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
And 9D is an ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role. So I want to be clear, this is potential final action today.
Tom, my, my experience is that these are all public meetings. You know, the bid meetings are all public, and, you know, I would encourage you to, as you have, get with Tiffany and attend those meetings and talk about what's going on and help set the budget and, you know, each one of our districts that are bids have that kind of participation with property owners.
Just need notification.
And business owners. So just get involved.
And I'll say, I attended my first business district meeting, I believe, last month, and I got to meet a, a lot of the participants in the Adventure District. And it is important for the community to be involved, so I'm, I know that they are very open to community participation, and I, I think it is a good idea for a notice to maybe be passed around to the community, for them to be advised of the meeting. So we have plenty of time because we have a meeting coming up in a couple months. So I know we can make sure we get the word out for that.
The other thing I'd just say for the record, as far as 9D is concerned, the amount of the assessment is different on 9D as opposed to 9C1 and 2, it looks like to me. One says 206 and one says 204. I don't know what the appropriate amount is.
That is definitely an error.
All I'm saying is whatever we vote on, it, it should be the correct number, whether it's.
Kim, is it possible to amend today, or does this need to be deferred?
We should be able to.
You can amend this today.
But I guess, yeah, you legally can amend it. I mean, do you know how you would like to amend it here on the fly, or?
And I, I wish I had, the memo should have the correct amount, and it should be the 204. It's the lesser amount.
We can just amend 9D to the 204 amount, correct, Craig?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking for that amount in the resolution that we're actually approving under 9D, and I'm not seeing it, or the ordinance. Maybe we don't need, maybe it was just mistaken in the memo. Do we actually have to amend anything in the 9D?
No.
Ordinance?
If it's not.
Yeah, in the ordinance under 9D, I'm not seeing that figure being used. Now, it's maybe in the background materials.
On the third page, on the financial impact report, it uses the figure 206.
Okay. So that would just be informational materials that he's referring to, not necessarily something we're actually voting on? Where is that? Oh, this? Okay.
And that's actually provided for the documentation, but it's not.
Okay. I see. So the actual thing we're voting on under 9C says 204, which is what we wanted to say.
Mayor, we'll clarify that in a minute. They're both the same.
Okay. Is that, is that okay, Councilman Stonecifer?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, back on the item. 9C1, public hearing. Does anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Okay. 9C2, resolution in adopt, adopting and confirming an assessment role. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move the item.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9D, ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role for the Adventure District.
Let's move that item, with obviously the exception that will be cleared up in the minutes.
Right, right. Motion, motion in a second to that effect. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to 9E. This is an ordinance to be introduced, set for a public hearing on January 29th, the final adoption potentially on February 12th. I believe we have a, this relates to planning and zoning. I believe we have a presentation from Lisa Cronister, perhaps?
Yes.
Or Aubrey?
Yes, Lisa.
Oh, there she is.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Aubrey Dermuth, Planning Director. I'm going to ask Lisa Cronister, who's the manager for Urban Design Division, to give you a brief overview of the ordinance changes we've been working on for the last couple of years for our downtown design districts.
The ordinance before you today would amend portions of the downtown design districts ordinance and portions of the urban design districts ordinance. As Aubrey was describing, I manage the current planning and urban design division, which implements the city's design district ordinance across all of our design review districts. That includes our most, some of our most popular character areas, Bricktown, Plaza, Uptown 23rd. The boundaries of the, the downtown design review district includes three sub-districts. It extends roughly from Northwest 13th Street to the river and from Claussen Boulevard to I-235. Then the urban design districts are scattered across the urban core, includes portions of 23rd Street, Plaza, Capitol Hill, and Cottage District. So these, the overview of the ordinance amendment is that it incorporates feedback we gathered from our Cottage District stakeholders outreach. I'll go into more detail in that in a minute. It incorporates some changes from a study on automobile alley guidelines and some work with Automobile Alley Association. It captures some miscellaneous changes that staff has tracked over the past few years to make the ordinance easier to move, to, easier to implement, easier to use, easier for citizens to access. There is some duplicate and conflicting information in, in the urban design section that we want to remove, and we want to remove, to change most fence regulations to guidelines. So Cottage District, when the design review So, Cottage District, when the design review committees, Planning Commission, and the council adopted the downtown development framework in 2015, it was adopted as a supplemental guideline. And we began immediately looking at how does the zoning ordinance, if and how this zoning ordinance needs to be updated to reflect some of the content of the DDF. Because the DDF is a, is a design guideline, but it's not embedded in the zoning ordinance. To do that, we analyzed, we said we started with the Cottage District, because various property owners had approached us to do so. There's been so much development activity over the past many years, that everyone asked for us to take a keen look at it. So, we looked at the existing ordinance, we looked at the DDF, we looked at Plano OKC, we looked at recent projects that were coming forward, and how the character of the area has developed over the last decade. We also held many stakeholder meetings. One was a huge kickoff at the Civic Center in the summer of 2016. We held small group meetings with various groups of stakeholders on smaller topics. So, we brought all that back together, and the, the consensus out of all that, or staff's recommendation, was, yes, that the downtown development framework did, did capture everyone's vision for the district. There's an existing requirement that says the first floor level of all the homes has to be 24 inches above grade. That was one of the original design regulations, because it helped mimic a bungalow-style home character, where you have the raised porch. But since the character of the area has gone to a more contemporary, modern home style, the floors are usually at grade and not raised. Changed the setback requirement to be consistent with any use. Now, the ordinance distinguishes a different setback between one and two-family structures as opposed to multifamily structures. But the, it would, a consist, a consistent setback was desired. Changes, again, many of the fence regulations to guidelines. Our fence regulations are unusually detailed. They describe the picket width, the picket spacing, and it, it basically results in one kind of fence, whereas we find that developers, architects, property owners would like some more design flexibility. The, we also included some language to confirm that staff had, had specific authority to administratively approve some of the work, like we do in the rest of the districts, but it wasn't completely clear in the urban, in for Cottage District. In automobile alley, we faced a similar question, in that there is a design guideline from 20 years ago called the Automobile Alley Guidelines for the Next Century. And that century actually ended in 2000. So, the question was, did it need to be updated and re-adopted? And in our study of that, we concluded that most of the guidelines contained in that document had subsequently been captured in the downtown development framework. They had been captured in the, in a document called the Building Conservation and Rehabilitation Guidelines. Both of those had already been adopted by reference by the design review committees, so they were already in use. The only thing that was not captured was a consideration of what was the appropriate height for the historic heart of automobile alley. The DBD base zoning ordinance allows an unlimited height, but there was language in the guidelines about that there shouldn't be too much of a differential, differential of height between new buildings and existing buildings. So, to that end, we worked with the Automobile Alley Association to set a diff, to set a maximum height on Broadway, either side of Broadway, between Northwest 6th and Northwest 10th, and then a different maximum height between 4th and 6th. Again, to keep a cohesive character of that historic core of automobile alley. Then, some other changes. We moved some language around to make it easier to find. There was discrepancy on whether chain link fencing was ever appropriate in the districts, and we believe it is not. Again, not just in Cottage, but all over downtown, the fence regulations will be changed to guidelines. And then, there's still a reference from a, from an older document, the Streetscape Master Plan, that we're going to eliminate, because the Streetscape Master Plan is no longer in One other specific change for urban design districts is, there's some duplicate language about, that governs the Paseo Business District. Years ago, it was regulated by the Historic Preservation Commission, but when it was changed to be overseen by the Urban Design Commission, there was some duplicate language that was never removed. And it has caused great confusion for developers and staff since, so we're removing that. Then, so, in the last six months, we have, in addition to our couple of years' worth of stakeholder outreach, we've met with all of the design review committees who have recommended this ordinance. We've met with Planning Commission multiple times to work out the final document, and now we're here to introduce it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, Lisa, with regard to the height changes on Broadway, that's all been approved by the Automobile Alley?
Yes.
Board?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments and questions for Lisa? This, again, is just introduction today. We'll have a public hearing in a couple of weeks, final adoption in February. We would need a motion to set that schedule and introduce the ordinance?
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And thank you, Lisa, for all your work on this. Okay, we have now a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures under 9F1. We do, in fact, have a couple of people who have signed up to speak. The first is Joshua Greenhaugh. This is, well, I'll let him state which item you're, you're here to speak on. Which, which of, which under 9F1 is it, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It would be item M 4325 Northwest 21st Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Joshua Greenhaugh, 1900 Northwest Expressway. I'm an attorney, and my client, Communication Federal Credit Union, holds a mortgage on the property listed there at item M. There's a sheriff sale set for this matter, or for this property, March 7th. After that time, I expect my client or the purchaser at sale will have the opportunity to remediate the dilapidation, but no one except for the owner can do it at this time. I'm just informing the council of, of that fact. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No response needed. Michael Washington has signed up to speak under 9F. And Mr. Washington, which item were you wanting to speak on?
Oh, several of them.
Okay.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Now, this gentleman to my left, I have nothing against. The utmost respectful. However, these building structures up for possibly being deliberately stolen is of a different concern here. Now, let me take, for example, I'm only interested in, by the way, Ward 7, where I live. We have 2206, C, 26, 2206 South Santa Fe Avenue, East Building, fence and house, west, we have that up there. My goodness, that, Jesus Christ, I didn't know that, did I? Was the owner, I'm sure you, I'm going to table that for later on. Goodness gracious. Okay, then we got G 328 Southeast 15th Street, house, Ward 7. Lord, I'd be afraid to stand up myself. Hmm, okay. Then we got H 905 Southeast 15th Street.
That one's actually stricken.
Oh, stricken, okay. Then we've got I 909 Southeast 15th Street. Yeah, now, I mean, that, that is a nice one to the community, all of them so far. That, that's saying I agree with them, though. Then we go to O 1304 Northeast 24th Street. Now, we are on my side of town. Now, what's wrong with this? What's, my goodness, am I looking at something? What's wrong with this here? Okay, so that, have we talked at all? Oh, my goodness. Oh, that, mercy, I tell, I tell, yeah. Lack of argument. Okay, 13, now, now, save, now, how many, how many, how many times have y'all given these owners the opportunity to, to correct this situation?
I'm sorry?
How many times have y'all given these owners, have y'all contacted them, telling them they need to come and compliance and?
We've contacted the, yeah, we posted the notices on the property. We've also contacted the owners, and we've contacted any mortgage holders.
Oh, okay. What about 13, P, 1316 Northeast 24th Street? Wow, now, what's, what are we looking at, trees in the way or something? What's happening there? I mean, what's, okay, is this abandoned, or what, I mean?
It's fire.
Oh, fire, yeah, it definitely needs, definitely need to be corrected, that's no question about that. Yeah, there's a definite, you know what, now, I'm getting ready to close here. I have no problem with, you know, y'all handling this correction here, but for the most part, are we setting this up for Urban Renewal to come in and claim properties like they got so many other thousands of property already on the northeast side without our permission? This is what my, I'm trying to get at here, you know? So, in other words, with you, sir, so if the, if the property is torn down, I mean, the buildings, the property still belongs to the owners, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, so therefore, y'all would also charge them for coming in and, and, with demolition and turning the building down and removing the debris, then?
Yes.
Okay, so then, therefore, that would also give you an opportunity to place a lien on their properties, then?
That would be correct.
And then, if they can't pay for it, or don't come for it, then it becomes yours, then?
No.
It would. It's so many times it has been, why would it not?
It's, it's never done that.
Y'all never done, so you can guarantee?
Far as my knowledge, that we've never done that.
So, you can guarantee that if your lien is placed on that property, and only to sell your settlement, that you would not take that people's property? Is that what you're saying?
We've never done that.
And so, you don't anticipate doing it, then?
No.
Thank you for the record. All right, now, we got S. Now, how do I, okay, my, my God, yeah, man, go to another. Jesus Christ, I don't know, you know, that ain't no better than that. I'm serious, now, you know, I mean, I don't want to go so far with a support number. And then, T, I'm just my last one, and I don't flag going on the rest of them.
That's actually not Ward 7.
See? Oh, okay.
But if you want to catch up, you can pick up K and L, because you missed those in Ward 7. So, will you pull those up for him, so he can see them, please?
K and L.
K was 204 Southeast 19th Street, just for the sake of this argument, and L, 1 Southeast 21st Street.
Yes, okay, now, in closing, then, now, for, for all I'm concerned, you know, I don't believe, like I said, that the bulldog is in place. You know, I don't believe that you're trying to, according to what I'm seeing here. However, the residents and owners, and not residents, but the owners do have a, a absolute due process right in knowing that the properties are subject for being torn down. And for the most part, I agree, and for the most part, for the record, if they do not settle it, correct it. It definitely has to be something done, because of the danger for kids, or things could be riding by, or whatever, you know? So, again, and if you do, do give them due process and due diligence, I do believe it has to be corrected and straightened out. And with that, I will close my discussion on that matter. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. No one else has signed up to speak under the public hearing for F1, so that would bring us to 9F2, resolution declaring structures are dilapidated, except for the one stricken at the beginning of the meeting.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9G1. This is the public hearing regarding unsecured structures, except for the great number that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. No one has signed up to speak. So, that brings us to the resolution, item 9G2. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9H1, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings, except for the ones, of course, that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. No one has signed up to speak. We've got a resolution motion for 9H2. Did I hear a second?
Yeah, second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9I, joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust revising the trust's miscellaneous fee and rentals schedule. This is basically a setting parking rates.
Yes. I'd ask Mark to give us a quick update on this item.
Thanks. Good morning, Your Honor, Council. A pleasure to be with you. This item is the change to the miscellaneous fee and rental schedule. We have several fees in this schedule, but this one is a subsequent to action we did a couple of months ago with the commuter population. So, a commuter is the flight attendants and flight crews that basically live in Oklahoma City or the surrounding area, but they park at the airport in an employee parking lot, and then they have to fly to, say, Dallas Love or Dallas Fort Worth International to actually start their trip and their work week. So, we've had commuters for decades that have parked here at Will Rogers World Airport. And this change actually creates two parking areas for the commuter population. We're allowing those that have been existing commuters to park in the east employee lot, where we also have a lot of airport employees that park in that lot, but we're starting to have capacity issues. The issue is, I have about 450 spaces in this lot, and I have about the same amount of commuters. Now, commuters only travel three to seven days per trip, so they're not in there all the time. But the issue is a math problem, where I've got over 800 employees that work at the airport's terminal, and typically, out of one space, we can turn a space over a couple of times, because we have 24-hour operations. So, you can imagine, with over 1,200 people permitted to park in 450 spaces, we have a capacity issue. So, in order to address that, we're allowing, and we've worked out with the commuter population, to allow them to stay in the existing lot. However, new commuters now will be advised to go to our public lot number one at a reduced rate. And we think that that, through attrition with the commuter population, will allow us to manage our facilities in the best way possible. So, request your approval. This is a joint resolution. It was passed by the Oklahoma City Airport Trust on December 20th. Thank you, Senator Manter. Any questions?
Thanks, Mark. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Got a motion and a second for the resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9J1, resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Ashton v. City of Oklahoma City, and Grayson and Ashton v. City of Oklahoma City. I'm told we don't need an executive session? Take a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9K1, resolution authorizing and directing the municipal counselor to enter into an agreed settlement with LEPAK and Journal of Entry of Judgment in the Oklahoma County District Court's case style, the City of OKC versus Lewis v. LEPAK Trucking. You heard what I said. Trying to paraphrase these sometimes goes off the rails. Move the item. We do not need an executive session. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we do need an executive session on item 9L. This is to receive confidential communications regarding City of OKC versus AFSME. Move the item into executive session. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that at the end of our other business. Item 9M was deferred.
Stricken.
Stricken, I'm sorry. 9N1, claims recommended for denial. There are items A through D here. Has anyone here wished to speak on the items recommended for denial? Seeing none. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 10A1, claims recommended for approval. There are items A through E. Anyone wishing to speak? No?
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to items from council. Why don't we handle the business first, and then we'll, uh, go around the horseshoe. There's a resolution approving travel expenses for Councilwoman Nikki Nice.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. I'll point out, this is for incidentals only. It's less than $200. The trip is actually already paid for. This requires six affirmative votes. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And so, does anyone have any items? We'll start with Ward 1.
I, I have two. Last week, there was a scathing audit of the Dallas CBB, which I believe was instituted by the city council, and, um, I think, uh, reading through that, there's a lot of things that wouldn't apply to us, but like us, the bulk of their CBB gets their funds from the hotel occupancy tax. But I'd certainly like to hear from Mike Carrier the next time he does his quarterly report, why what happened in Dallas can't happen in Oklahoma City, or why it might not apply. And then, I'd be curious, does the, does the city council have the ability to audit...do we have audit authority, Kenny, on entities that receive the hotel occupancy tax, like the CDB and the fairgrounds?
While we would know, he's familiar with the contract. I'd have to look at the contract. We can get back with you on that.
Okay. All right, thanks. Second thing is, I, I just got an email, I guess MT Barry's, they're announcing his retirement. So, that's two assistant city manager posts. I, I was struck, not, not saying it's not justified, I'm just saying, I was just struck that both, those positions pay more than $200,000 a year, and I started, I know we had an article about what public officials are paid, and I talked with Craig about this yesterday. I'd just like to know that that's in line with what other cities pay, um, for assistant city manager positions, and maybe also, like, department heads. I'm not, I'm not saying it's unreasonable, I'm just saying, I don't know where we are, um, compared to other peer cities.
We do survey periodically, but I'll, I'll be sure and get that information for you.
Thanks, Craig. Thank you.
I had the, uh, distinguished opportunity to speak at a juvenile intervention program last week, which is, for me, is like one of the funnest and most exciting things I can ever do as a city councilman. Um, and I just wanted to remind, it reminded myself, and I wanted to remind others of some of the programs that, uh, Oklahoma City Police are doing, that are really trying to help some juveniles. These are, these are kids that might have made a mistake, they're just, it's a minor offense, offense, um, and really just kind of tries to help them get back on track, uh, before any more damage is done to their future. So, uh, I wanted to thank Oklahoma City Police for, for following through with that program and for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. I do want to, I have a couple of things that I did want to mention. Uh, we had a Cincinnarian that passed away, and they funeralized him on, uh, this past Saturday, and just want to recognize Mr. Delmar, and he worked for many years at, uh, Remington Park as a senior, um, just full of long life and longevity, and obviously, uh, just that history gone, just wanted to, to mention that, uh, in his service that he had to Oklahoma City, as well as the Adventure District, uh, which is located in Ward 7. Uh, another thing is, today, we celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who would have turned 90 years young. Uh, he was born this day in 1929, and there is a theme, uh, for this year, it's called unity. And I bring up him in particular because he had a very significance and importance to Oklahoma. He made one visit to Tulsa, but he made two visits to Oklahoma City, and in 1953, he was 24-years-old, and he preached his first sermon at Calvary Baptist Church, uh, which is located on Walnut and 2nd Street. But, uh, to, to our surprise, they told him, he was too young, uh, to pastor that church, and as you can tell, he went on to do many more great things. But he did come back in July of 1960. He returned to Oklahoma City for a Freedom Rally, and he was in front of more than 1,500 people. So, with that, uh, I'll leave a quote that, uh, it is recorded, that he said when he had a visit in Tulsa the previous day, which is, "We must live together as brothers or perish together as fools." So, that commemorates the 90th birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Um, and also want to make mention, um, and, uh, commend La Baguee. They will be having a grand opening in the Deep Deuce area, so we're excited for many great things to come in that area. And we have January 22nd, we have a meeting at the Douglas Center in their gym. It's going to be at 6:00 PM, and this is, uh, asking input from the community, and this is regarding the 2017 GO bond for that new community center, which will be, uh, in effect, and we are looking forward to this community center. And also, January 26th, we will have Award 7 Breakfast, which, this is something, uh, we're going to start for January and continue on throughout, uh, as long as I'm here and able to help give out information. So, we're going to have Ian Colgan, who's going to give some information. We're also going to have, uh, Major Tink Collins with the Oklahoma City Fire Department, who's going to talk about the diversity and the importance of diversity that we need for the Oklahoma City Fire Department. And we're also going to have a couple of our, um, commissioners, Commissioner Robinson Woods, who, who serves on our MAPS III Advisory Board, and also, uh, our representative for Parks, which is Gary Wood. So, those are some of the things, and before I forget, as you heard earlier when we started, the route has changed, but, uh, please join us Sunday. We're going to be having the annual Martin Luther King Program. That's going to be at St. John Baptist Church, and this particular program, um, has been in existence for over 50 years. And Oklahoma City started, uh, having this program as far as remembering the history and legacy of Dr. King, and his father was the first person to come and speak at St. John Missionary Baptist Church. So, it's very important for us to understand the importance of Dr. King and the legacy, and even, uh, just the connections that he had to Oklahoma City. And there will be something that evening at Temple Benai Israel, and of course, there are so many things that are happening on this coming Monday to commemorate, uh, the federal holiday for Dr. King, and you can visit, there is a website, I believe, MLKOKC.org for more information, and I know we'll be participating as a city in this great effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. I have nothing to say.
All right, thank you, and I'll add, uh, any, anyone within the sound of my voice is welcome to join me Thursday at noon, uh, at our city's Facebook page for my first State of the City address. It will be broadcast Facebook Live at, uh, facebook.com/cityofokc, Thursday at noon. Um, Craig, city manager reports, item 12?
Yes, we have the sales and use tax report for January. Here's another strong check. Um, the, you can see that the growth that's projected, or the growth over last year was about a little over 17%, almost 18%. That does include the quarter cent comparison still, so it's about 5% growth underlying, which is still strong. Um, we've had a few months that were down a little bit, that were a little bit lower growth. We didn't have a decline, but lower growth, and this is, um, a return of the strong growth. Um, use tax, again, just continuing to do very well. A lot of that has to do with online sales that we're receiving, which is very positive for the community, not just now, looking at what we're capturing now, but going forward as you see more and more sales going online, and I think it really helps cities, um, not just Oklahoma City, but cities going forward. Um, overall, we're about $10 million over target between sales and use tax, so really strong for the year. And that's all that I have. Yes, sir?
Craig, may I ask a question? I guess I misread that. It looked like maybe 18 million above where we had budgeted when we combined.
Um, it might be 18 million over. It's, it's about 10 million over between sales and use tax. It's about, maybe it's 18 million over last year.
Yeah.
Maybe the comparison. I'd have to go back and look at that one, but I know it's about $10 million over right now between the two.
I would like to make this suggestion. I, I know getting started on the budget isn't everybody's favorite thing to do, but I do think if we go back the last four-plus years, there have been things that we, uh, took out of the budget just to be, you know, uh, better stewards over the finances during those times when the economy was, uh, softer. Maybe we can reintroduce some of those things, especially in the area of street maintenance, uh, ceiling, and some of the other things that we do with respect to, uh, the conditions of the street.
We're certainly taking a look at that. Departments are still preparing their budgets and submitting their budget now, um, so we'll have that included in the process, and it'll definitely be something that's considered.
Thank you.
Do you, Craig, do you have a sense of what percent of the use tax is online versus...
Um, some of that's difficult to say because you have some companies, so the use tax has, um, more online from companies that don't exist here, so we'll see that, and I, I'll look to see if there's a way that I can pull out, you know, like what portion of our sales tax would be represented, I mean, your use tax. We also have a lot, have a lot of online sales that are represented within sales tax. If you have vendors that are located, like a Walmart or a Target, vendors that are located here that collect it, too, so we also have a significant representation of online sales, even within the sales tax. But I'll look at the use tax data and see if there's a way that we can pull out and get an estimate of what percentage would be online.
And to David's point, can you remind me the allocation of the use tax, what, what's committed? How, how we spend that?
So, use tax, the, um, one penny, so it's 4.125%, I think is the rate. The one penny that is with MAPS is set aside in a separate fund because it's temporary. The sale, the use taxes that are permanent all go back into the general fund, so they're all incorporated into the general fund.
And the part that's temporary, is that committed to public safety vehicles?
It's, it's in the MAPS III use tax, and historically, we have used it for public safety vehicles and equipment.
Okay.
And that's a resolution that we bring forward to the council every year. It's included in the budget, but then we also bring a resolution to the council every year.
But all the rest just goes back into...
It goes into the general fund and is incorporated as part of the services that are provided.
Okay.
And is incorporated in the budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Craig? And, uh, claims and payroll can be found on our website at OKC.gov under this agenda. Um, thank you, Craig, and, uh, that brings us to item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. We've had three who signed up. Ronnie, if you, uh, wouldn't mind, as per usual, stating your name and address and keeping your remarks at three minutes or less.
My name is Ronnie Kirk, from 2328 North Missouri, from Ward 7. Back in December, I went to a, a, a forum given by the Spring Lake Division Police Department, where they spoke at the Life Church, at the Life Church. They were saying, "Why do the communities resist us? Don't, the kids are scared to talk to us." And so, I, I told them, "They're not scared." And here, the, the reason I went to that police forum was to try to get them to send a couple of representatives down here on the things I spoke about. Uh, we're trying to stop this evolving door of all our kids going back and forth to this penitentiary. It's already predicted that 60% is going back to the penitentiaries. I had, my daughter, my daughter had three babies' fathers. Two of them went to the penitentiary. They were called to his house, and I told them, "Boys, y'all getting some kind of skills for y'all in the penitentiary." Those, I said, "Don't call this house. Want to speak to my daughter and talk to your kids until y'all get some type of skills. Get a transfer. Go to..." It's a few facilities in Oklahoma that offer trades to these kids. Those boys took time out, took those skills, got certificates out of state, come out certified. One doing plumbing, one doing heating and air. This will work for a lot of the kids in this penitentiary system. If they, if you take, if you send me to the penitentiary and lock me up, y'all is saying you don't have enough staff at the penitentiary and the jailhouse to protect me, and I'm going in there, I'm going in there, and I'm new, and three, four guys come in there, try to make a woman out of me, I'm going to make something to protect myself, because you can't protect me. Y'all, they got me locked up, and plus, you ain't training me nothing. Long as, all these kids in there, they want to come out being a man, they don't want to come out a woman. They trying to protect their own manhood. They making a shank, trying to protect themselves. They don't want to be raped every time they go, you, take a shower, uh, and, and domino, and make dominoes out of matchbooks. That's all they learning now and then. With all these, it's so far, a mud flow in California last night destroyed many houses. Fires in California, brought up a whole town. Florida, tsunami's coming in. Train these kids through this plumbing, woodwork, framing, roofing.
Mr. Kirk, with three minutes, if you could just wrap it up.
Yes, sir. Didn't they, all they got to do, check with the PO, "Man, I, let me go for six months, make me some of this money so I can take care of my family, instead of coming back and forth to this penitentiary." Well, y'all, they got me locked up. Train these kids some skills. Don't make so hard for them to get these skills. California, when they had all the fires, they took some of the guys out of the penitentiary to help fight fires. Here in Oklahoma, we can do some of the same thing, just train these kids. They taught it years ago, basic skills. They need to learn some other than making dominoes out of matchbooks.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you. Forgive me this time to speak.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael Washington.
Excuse me, yeah, Michael Wash, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Again, as Ms. Nikki Nice had pointed out, and as this gentleman just spoke, I don't want to piggyback on him because I only have three minutes, but he's definitely talking about a very serious issue that is indeed important, that, uh, maybe some resolution need to be, uh, designed to correct it. Now, let me say before I close here, that you're looking at the man who's responsible for the Freedom Center, here in Oklahoma City, being preserved as a historical preservation site. Everyone knows this. As a matter of fact, Katie Friedle made that point clear, and I have the documentation there, that I was the only person who brought it to her attention in November of 2017. However, each year, the NAACP, along with the Tinker Federal Credit Union, they hold a, a, what's it called, a silent march, and they start at the Freedom Center and marches to the, uh, History Center on 23rd, and I believe that's Missouri Street, I'm not sure. Anyhow, that dilapidated building, we're going to hopefully ensure that this be the last time, that when these people come, I mean, are you kidding me? Is this what Clara Looper intended for this monumental structure to end up in, and then having a Martin Luther King silent march standing before a building that looks like it's somewhere down in, in Hobo Land or some scary movie? That, that's not a representation of, of freedom, justice, and equality. That is a representation of something that you just don't care about, and it took Michael Washington alone, and nobody, who had all the opportunities, the all these so-called leaders that we got, I'm talking on a civil rights level, now they want to stand in the way and remove Michael Washington, but that just ain't happening, because right now, we got litigation going in the court, right here in the district court of Oklahoma County. And you want to know why? I've already got written one of the so-called receivers who thinks that they can come in and not only that, but worship their authority, remove me. Now, we got a second one that's getting ready to go, Mr. Leonard Benton. I don't mind saying it. Why? Because you're not going to disregard all these meetings and clandestine and then remove Michael Washington. But let me say in closing here, that we hope that Clara Looper can say in her grave, saying, "Michael Washington, thank you for not allowing the City of Oklahoma City to destroy the great thing that I put for the northeast side of Oklahoma City." One last word. Clara Looper always stayed, and I, people don't know, I was there many years with her. But let me tell y'all something, as a young man, being hard-headed, that great woman,